That wasn't hard, huh? Can you turn up the volume, the model? That was really low. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, I, I'm ready to say it because we, I did it in closed session last time.
I'm happy and I'll, I'll send you some emails.
Good afternoon.
I think her mic's not on. Holly Mitchell's mic.
Let's start by acknowledging these amazing sweet treats. That are amazing and I'm not sure. Did everybody else get their favorite? I got my favorite.
I got my favorite.
Are these your favorites? Oh, this Vo has ESP. She knows things. That's amazing. Um, can I go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please?
Robert Byrd?
Here.
Alma Cortez?
Here.
Barbara Ferrer?
Here.
Astrid Hager?
Here.
Abigail Marquez?
Here.
Summer McBride?
Here.
Maricela Ramirez?
Here.
Carol Segala?
Here.
Deanne Tilton Durfee?
Here.
Jaclyn McCroskey?
Here.
Alejandra Avran Moses?
Here.
Lisa White Crow? And Holly Mitchell?
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you so much for this meeting, colleagues. We've received a request from Commissioner Ramirez to teleconference pursuant, pursuant to AB 2449's just cause due to travel while on official business. Commissioner Ramirez, will you please confirm that you are teleconferencing pursuant to AB 2449 for just cause due to travel while on official business for Laco?
Yes, that is correct.
And can you also confirm that there are no individuals with you under the age of 18 years of age present?
Yes, that no one's present. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's go ahead and do I, I need a motion to approve the commissioner's request to participate?
No, we don't.
I do not. Beautiful. So the next item on our agenda, colleagues, is, um, our consent agenda. Let me go ahead and ask for public comment on the consent agenda, then we'll have a roll call.
Confirming there are no public comments on the consent agenda.
All right. Can we call roll on the consent agenda, please?
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Alma Cortez?
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Abigail Marquez?
Yes.
Summer McBride?
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez?
Yes.
Carol Segala?
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell?
Aye.
Great. And before I say motion is passed, can I get a motion in a second?
Right. Chair, I was just going to ask, are we to consider that a motion from you to approve the consent?
Yes, and a second by Commissioner McBride.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Motion is passed.
Thank you. The chocolate bund cake had me all confused. Commissioner Ramirez, I'm sorry you're not here, um, this meeting. We're gonna make it up to you next time you're here in person. And then I'll have a second one when you're here in person. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting. Um, a lot has happened to me, to all of us, since we were last here. Um, I, uh, am happily participating in the delightful bund cake because I'm clear that we all have to give ourselves grace during, um, these times that can sometimes feel overwhelming. But, um, I hope that you share the same sentiment that I do, that, um, this board's vision, mission, and voice matters, um, on behalf of our youngest residents, perhaps now more than ever, and that we're doing work that the community tells us is critical. I happen to think that our work is about to become even more critical, um, as we are faced with, um, significant changes at the national level. Um, but as I always tend to remind people that, uh, national elections are important, um, I happen to believe that local politics and local elections perhaps matter even more. What decisions that are made at the local level can have direct impact and touch lives, um, in a very significant and meaningful way. And so here in LA County, I'm proud, um, that we will continue, um, the work, um, and the overall commitment that we have to building a future where all children and all families can thrive. And I remain encouraged that, um, First Five LA, um, has what it takes in our staff, in the leadership of our staff, and in this board, um, to continue to deliver services and the vision that we seek to accomplish. And so I hope, um, that you all feel as I do, that sitting alongside each of you who are dedicated to this work, that we will continue and we will not be defeated. And so with that, I want to make sure that everybody has paid attention to the, uh, board calendar that's in your packet. Uh, it follows the same key touchpoints as last year's calendar, um, while also taking into account some of the critical work that we have to do to implement our tactics and initiatives that we'll be discussing actually later today. So I want to make sure that everybody pulls it out of your binder. You may turn in your binder before you leave like I do. We'll pull the calendar out so it may, you can make sure that you hand it to whoever does your calendar or you pay attention to those dates directly. If you have any, um, questions or inquiries, you can address those to our board relations staff, Ms. Knowles or Ms. Vo directly. Wanted to just make sure that we brought it to your attention today. Any public comment on my atypical, somber report?
No public comments.
Thank you. With that, let's move it over. Any questions or comments from board members? With that, let's move it on to our executive director's report.
Thank you so much, Chair Mitchell. Um, so I, I love seeing this full horseshoe. I don't think we've had that, um, for some time, so it's really, really lovely to see everyone here. Um, I'm also really excited about celebrating, um, the year one of strategic plan implementation and giving the board an update on that. Um, and I want to start by thanking our chair, uh, Supervisor Mitchell. When she started this work, uh, really, really encouraged the board, um, to speak up and give a lot of input to the team you see here, and that you did, my friends, that you did, yes. Um, and appreciate the diverse opinions, voices, uh, to get here to make sure that we're capturing what families need. So thank you for, um, uh, helping us with those efforts, Chair. Um, folks, uh, as we look at the document in front of you, there's a few things that I want to highlight. Um, first and foremost, this has been the first year of strategic plan implementation. And what the board has been really clear about is we need to engage communities to see what initiatives we will be focusing on, um, and you'll hear about that later today. Um, as the chair mentioned, in light of recent elections, um, this is more important and more urgent than ever. And the thing that struck me the most is the wisdom that our communities had at the beginning of the year, middle of this year, in informing this strategic plan. And what communities lifted up really clearly was basic needs, making sure that we're addressing, looking at basic needs, and making sure that we don't get stuck in basic needs, that we're actually looking at what it takes for children and families to thrive. So while there will be some flexibility in what you have in front of you, it is really, I, I just want to emphasize, um, just the importance of community partners and the wisdom that they have shared. Deep gratitude to the board. You all took a look at this document, um, several iterations, edits, gave us incredible input, gave us insights about where we actually need to make sure we're looking at, uh, deepening partnerships. Um, so lots of gratitude to you all, um, on that. There's incredible community members, organization members in the audience, um, that participated from, uh, the beginning of last year, um, through some of this, um, so appreciate those of you here. And most importantly, uh, to the First Five LA team, um, you would not let this process forget engaging community. You would not allow this process forget disproportionality and disparities. Um, so to all of you here in the audience, um, to our coordinating committee that carried incredible work, um, and to those of you listening, um, in other rooms, um, First Five LA's team, I am deeply, deeply grateful to you all and centering community, um, centering equity in this work, and I'm very excited about 2025 with you all, given what our families will need. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, I echo your comments in terms of staff digging deep and guiding us through this process. And, and again, thanks to the public as well. Ms. Vo, any public comment on the executive director's report?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Seeing none, let's move on to agenda item number six, get into the meat of it. Our strategic plan implementation updates. It's an informational item on the strategic plan update, and with that, let me turn it over to Chrissy and Rigo Berto. I try. While we're waiting, I just noticed, Chrissy, is that picture in the room to the side, in the other room, is that you on the wall?
Yes!
Yes, I just realized that today. I said, huh, she looks familiar. Is that your baby?
Yes.
Fabulous. Beautiful picture.
Thank you.
And welcome to you both.
We're signed. We're sorry.
So good afternoon, everyone, and happy Native American Heritage Month. I'm Chrissy Castro, and I'm part of the consultant team that has been supporting First Five's strategic plan development and implementation, and I'm joined here with my colleague, uh, Rigo Rodriguez, and we'll introduce our guests a little bit, um, later in the presentation. Uh, the purpose of our presentation today is to provide an update on First Five LA's strategic plan implementation. And to do that, we're going to be covering four main objectives. The first is to review the First Five LA initiatives that we introduced last month. Uh, specifically, we'd like to get, uh, deeper into providing some additional detail about the types of activities that will take place in 2025. Uh, we'll also discuss 2025 board presentations, uh, and we'll also, as you see, we'll have guests, um, sharing more detail about, uh, specific tactics, uh, communications, engagement, and advocacy tactics that have already been underway this year. Uh, last, we'll make sure that we're clear about next steps, and we'll have an opportunity to celebrate together. Um, so as we shared at the last board meeting, uh, First Five has been in progress and will continue to be in progress with the implementation of the strategic plan in support of its vision and mission. Last month, we introduced the four initiatives that will serve as a roadmap for translating First Five's strategic plan into action, including the 10 key tactics that you see here. Uh, the four key initiatives, Prevention First, Vibrant Environments, Maternal and Child Well-Being, and Whole Child Bright Futures, thread together two or more of the measurable objectives in the strategic plan and are really designed to target systemic issues affecting young children and their families with the focus on equity and long-term impact. Uh, today, we want to provide a greater level of detail for those initiatives and, um, look at the implementation, examples of implementation for next year. So the first initiative, Prevention First, centering community strengths to address root causes and keep families thriving together. Uh, this initiative focuses on addressing root causes of family instability, specifically poverty and housing insecurity, which we know are huge issues in our community. It will be even more critical under the threat of austerity measures that First Five, uh, really wants to continue to do its part to protect the safety net. By expanding access to anti-poverty programs, family resource centers, housing supports, First Five aims to reduce risks of family separation and child welfare involvement. Uh, currently, 46% of households in LA County with children under five are housing insecure. And we know that there are deep disparities in poverty and housing insecurity impacting Black, Latino, and Native families across the county, where more than 50% of Black and Latino households with children under five report spending 30% or more on monthly income for housing expenses. So examples of First Five LA's work in 2025 will include coordination with the LA County Prevention and Promotion Systems Governing Committee to align efforts, particularly leveraging LA's Family First Prevention Service Program, to coordinate services across sectors. Uh, this was a strong recommendation from this board, as well as system partners, um, and you'll hear that as a through line throughout the work that will happen in 2025. Um, the second, uh, um, work that will, um, be underway in 2025 is the targeted research for housing policy. So through research on housing needs, First Five will build a policy agenda that advocates for more affordable housing options. Uh, this research will leverage existing work happening in the, uh, social movement around housing in LA, while also leveraging First Five's current work and partnerships for systemic change. Um, and last, there'll be engagement of communities for service connection and advocacy for systems change. First Five will partner with trusted community-based organizations and other institutions such as schools to help families access and navigate services. This engagement will also inform First Five's advocacy efforts, including public policy changes to remove barriers and streamline eligibility. Uh, it all will also include expanding economic supports like guaranteed basic income. Uh, the second initiative, Vibrant Environments, ensuring access to healthy foods and welcoming outdoor spaces for play. Uh, this initiative will support physical, cognitive, and social development for young children, especially in historically excluded communities, by ensuring equitable access to healthy foods and safe outdoor spaces for children. First Five will focus on expanding urban farming, increasing community awareness, and improving park access for, uh, families with children under five. Uh, for context, nearly half of children under five in LA County have limited access to parks. Only two of five children under five in LA live within a half mile of a grocery store, and over 40% of households in LA County were food insecure last year. So in 2025, in order to contribute to, um, improving these outcomes, First Five will build an equity-focused advocacy agenda for green spaces. So this includes, uh, research and development of an equity index tool that will map access to parks and green spaces for LA County families with children five and younger. This work will lay the foundation for coordinating an advocacy agenda focused on closing gaps in access to safe, welcoming green spaces for young children. Um, we also heard from you all that, uh, the 2028 Olympics was an important leverage opportunity for this work, so First Five LA will advocate for and build the capacity of community-based organizations to ensure that infrastructure investments leave a la- lasting legacy for young children and their families in that opportunity. Um, and lastly, advocacy, research, and communications for culturally appropriate healthy food. Uh, so First Five LA is moving an advocacy agenda to ensure equitable access to culturally appropriate and healthy, fresh food for families with young children. This includes leveraging data to, uh, identify food access gaps and preparing to partner with key stakeholders to address these disparities in high-due areas. Uh, at the same time, this initiative will support a communications campaign to ensure families with children under five are informed about and can utilize programs like WIC and SNAP, which stakeholders also identified as a major challenge. Um, I'm now going to hand it over to Rigo, who is going to, uh, share more about the final two initiatives, as well as to facilitate a conversation with you all about what types of presentations you'd like to hear in order to continue to go deeper into these initiatives.
Thank you, Chrissy. Uh, so, uh, I'm going to cover, uh, two initiatives, starting with maternal child, uh, maternal and child well-being, uh, and the long title is, "Ensuring Holistic Care for Mothers and Children Age Five and Younger." Uh, this initiative addresses maternal and child health, focusing on reducing infant mortality and improving access to maternal health care. Uh, First Five, uh, in this case seeks to expand culturally-affirming health services and early intervention, uh, for children with developmental challenges. And, ooh, am I on the right? Yes, I was.
You're good, you're good.
Okay. I forgot my glasses today, so I am, I'm toggling between my old ones and my new ones, and I'm trying to disguise it, and it's not coming out, so, okay, all right. All right, the next part is chronic stress, which is what I'm feeling right now, but, so, so First Five LA seeks to expand culturally-affirming health services and early intervention for children with developmental challenges. Um, and in particular, throughout the engagement process, we heard that chronic stress, uh, from systemic racism contributes to these alarming, uh, high, uh, mortality rates for Black infants. Uh, the infant mortality, uh, rate for children under age one in LA County is 3.7 deaths, deaths per 1,000 live births, uh, but for Black infants, it's substantially higher at 6.8, uh, per 1,000 births. We also, uh, have seen that Native American and Pacific Islander, uh, infants also face severe disparities, uh, that are frequently overlooked and currently not well-tracked either in regional public health data. So in light of this, the goal is to ensure healthier pregnancies, positive birth experiences, and early, uh, development support. This is part of the, this initiative here. Um, for 2025, um, the work will focus on the following, uh, tactics. Uh, one is engagement and communications narrative transformations through the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Prevention Initiative, or AIM. Uh, and as a core member of the AIM Coalition, First Five LA partners with county departments, community members, and organizations, and funders to address the unacceptably high rates of Black infant and maternal, uh, Black infant deaths and maternal deaths to ensure health and joyous births, uh, for Black families in LA County. Uh, First Five LA's continued contribution to this collective effort will focus on communications narrative transformations, seeking to foster awareness and promote the importance of healthy and joyous births for Black mothers and birthing people, uh, to strengthen knowledge of available resources for Black families, as well as spread awareness of how systemic racism has impacted Black families and the systems of support. Uh, this investment includes engagement of parents and stakeholders through the support of the AIM community action teams, uh, which are regionally-based collaboratives that develop locally-based initiatives to address birth equity. Emerging work going forward will focus on advocacy in local, state, and federal spaces to, uh, that work to priorities, prioritize maternal and child health. The second tactic is, uh, access, coordination, and workforce through, uh, home visiting. Uh, so in this case, uh, through this investment in maternal and child well-being, uh, First Five LA will continue, uh, its efforts to improve maternal health and increase access to early intervention services for children with developmental delays, specifically through this partnership, uh, with Welcome Baby, with the Welcome Baby Program in participating hospitals and select home visiting partners. Uh, families, uh, participate, uh, in regular screenings that help identify needs, including mental health, anxiety, uh, and age-appropriate developmental screenings. Uh, throughout the family's participation in the program, home visiting, the home visiting, uh, staff facilitate access to needed services, uh, including early intervention, mental health, and basic needs as appropriate. This includes communication efforts, uh, around recognizing the early signs, uh, and symptoms of, uh, perinatal mood and anxiety disorders to ensure access to licensed practitioners for appropriate diagnosis and wraparound support. This investment in home visiting also includes, uh, funding for a family strengthening oversight entity, uh, which provides access to data and is able to ensure a high-quality workforce by providing training, technical assistance, and other supports across this network of hospital and community-based providers. Um, these are the two, uh, examples of tactics that would underpin the initiative. Uh, these are not exhaustive, but rather really, uh, illustrative of the, the, the tactics that can help move this initiative forward. The other initiative is Whole Child Bright Futures Initiative. Um, this one focuses on universal, uh, access to high-quality early care and education for children across LA County. Uh, here, uh, First Five LA would be addressing the structural barriers such as inadequate subsidies and low workforce compensation, uh, while promoting culturally-responsive care. Uh, this initiative seeks to increase enrollment in publicly-funded ECE programs and improve access, uh, for low-income and underserved families. Uh, the two, uh, or, there's three tactics here. One is advocacy for expanding early care and education, access, and policy coordination. Uh, in this case, First Five LA is a critical voice in advocacy efforts to expand access to publicly-funded early care and education in LA County, focusing on securing increased funding and addressing childcare deserts, which are areas, as you know, of high needs for services. As part of our, uh, state advocacy agenda, uh, First Five LA will educate public officials at the local, state, and federal levels, um, including, uh, gubernatorial candidates about the importance of investing in early care and education responsive to the needs and, uh, of children and working parents, highlighting the need for a well-compensated workforce, culturally-affirming care, paid family leave, and equitable access. And integrating this advocacy with a broader systemic, um, priority will be linked to poverty alleviation and, uh, racial equity. Um, the second tactic is strengthening the early care and education workforce. Uh, so a core, this will be one of the core areas of focus. Um, and in this case, the advocacy will be around higher wages, uh, career pathways, and equitable licensing practices to address issues of recruitment and retention. Um, as you all know, pay equity, uh, is critical and professional respect in this area. I'm going to go now to the third tactic, which is coordination, curriculum innovation, and multilingual learning. Uh, here, First Five LA is committed to ensuring that early childhood education settings are culturally and linguistically responsive to the needs of diverse families. Uh, through advocacy and coordination with systems partners, including K-12, by pre-K-12 Education System, First Five LA will lay the foundation to support the future expansion of multilingual and multi-language programs, uh, through our communications campaign. Our communications campaign is focused on building public will and awareness to promote the benefits of multilingualism while advocating for culturally-affirming curricula that reflect the diversity of the community served. So that's the focus of this, um, uh, tactic. Um, so I covered the two initiatives, uh, that complement the first two that, uh, Chrissy mentioned. So, uh, at this point, we want to go to, uh, a dialogue with the board, if I may? Yeah? Um, so the discussion here is really around two questions. One is what kind of information would be most helpful for you as board members to ef- effect, to effectively fulfill your role as a Board of Commissioners as you, as we, as the organization moves into implementation? Again, what would be the most helpful to you? And in particular, are there certain presenters you'd like to hear from, community members, researchers, so that you can feel informed, supported, to fulfill your role?
And if members, just feel free to pose your questions.
I don't necessarily have a question, but one of the presentations I'd like to hear, which shouldn't be too difficult to secure, is because we have two members of the Prevention and Promotion Systems Governing Committee here, is a presentation on, on that, the PPSGC, and the work that's led to this point in the sort of future. Help us more specifically grasp what we could do that could be helpful.
I would like to hear from, or invite, the Community Voices, which is the countywide parent of largely children and subsidized childcare world, just as a touch point for us to continue to hear from them, hopefully their perception of both opportunities and challenges they're experiencing in the subsidized childcare arena. That'd be helpful for me.
I would love to see how the, this work intersects with the work that is being led by Christina Meza in the Poverty Alleviation Initiative. So I think that's one opportunity to look at the intersection. And then I would also love to offer a presentation of this strategic plan to our executive directors of our family source system. So we fund 19 community organizations that are doing a lot of the work that is embedded in the strategic plan, and so we would welcome an opportunity to present to them this plan and to see how we can leverage our city resources to support the work that First Five is intending to do. So two, two offers.
Thank you for elevating poverty alleviation, work I'm very proud of. I think with that, when you said that, it triggered for me. I wonder if we, if, if this board would be interested in hearing from Dr. Scorsa, who's leading our work at the county with already the Anti-Racism Diversity and Inclusion Initiative. On the data he is collecting, and I don't know if it's specific to zero to five, that'll be a question for him, but he could certainly talk about their parents. So maybe we want to invite Dr. Scorsa?
Absolutely.
Can I just?
Of course.
I actually took a vow of silence this morning, but I'm breaking it now. I guess when I say that, we, you know, we, we want to hear, we want to see change, and we'd like to be responsive to communities. And the community is really dependent on those who deliver the service to them, that they are in fact tuned into and paying attention to what the community needs. So when we talk about, like, I'm wondering, like, who do we, who are we going to communicate to? Like, what's our audience when we say we'd like to see this changed? And how do we do that? And, and just for an example, because it happens to be a huge pet peeve of mine right now, is how do we allow a health system in this county to shut down all mental health services in our hospitals when we're clearly identifying that it's of a critical need for both maternal and child health, everything prevention, and, and et cetera? It seems to me that if we are the countywide agency that we have, and, and that maybe speaking to that would be an, an important target, because if we are going to bring change to behavior and maternal well-being and child's well-being, we have to have mental health alongside health. That would be one question. And I think that goes to how is our voice heard? I think that's, that we have that kind of impact, that we're not only looking at data, but we're looking at how it can change behavior in the county so that we are addressing the communities. And I just got off an hour phone call with A, with the American Academy of Pediatrics about talking about how do we impact communities, rather than just, you know, talking about what policy should be. And, and I think the one thing that we all agree on is that it needs to be a community-based, responsive access to resources in the community, so they know where they can go to get help. We haven't done that. We've identified what they need, but we've not linked them to get access to what they need. So there goes my vow of silence.
Go ahead, Dr. Scorsa. Listen, everyone.
No, thanks. And, and, you know, I, I think it's like a corollary to your comments, Astrid, but I think it's also in response to what kind of information might be helpful. You know, I do think, I do think times are dramatically changed, and one of, I think, the opportunities in front of us, hopefully it's an opportunity, is to think differently about our partnerships. So, you know, I love what Astrid said about the community and the Community Voices and what do they need. I'm also cognizant that there are some big money interests that have some of those resources. I liked your example about, you know, hospitals just closing services. But, you know, when I think about, you know, where, where are their resources, and where are their resources that are likely to get a favorable sort of listening to by the new administration? I think about the healthcare system, honestly. You know, I think about the hospitals, I, you know, especially the larger hospitals, the teaching hospitals. You know, I, I think about, you know, how, they are a big business, you know, the health plans in particular, I think about that. And I, I think we've all built our relationships, but I, I have a feeling that we're going to need more resources in the coming years. And, you know, having a different set of partnerships with them might be something we want to talk, I mean, like, bringing, you know, we don't ever bring them in here to talk to them about, you know, where those opportunities are going to be. And, you know, I, I see it as, there is a policy, there is a policy agenda here that we've got to pursue. And I, I love what you said, Supervisor, at the beginning about, you know, what's, what's local is, is frankly, right now, what we have control over.
That part.
And it's going to be super important, I think, to sort of reassess. You know, I, I also, I mean, I told my staff to put me back on, what is the Chamber of Congress? I stopped paying dues a while ago. And I said, no, you know, like, we, you know, these are places where there is money right now, and there are resources, and we are going to need to be able to influence how those resources apply to this work. So, you know, my thinking is, like, is this a place where there's an opportunity to think differently about those partnerships? I think universally, people love the idea of supporting work for children zero to five and for families with children zero to five. And I think we haven't really needed, you know, we, you know, we've been able to just have a very progressive agenda. We haven't really needed to think about what some of, you know, the other opportunities might be. I think we should think quickly about what those are.
I think we should go to private as well.
Yeah.
I think some of the major private entities would love to partner in terms of preserving a sense of the future for our kids. And I think that, that we haven't done that, because we always felt we had the luxury of the government behind us. But I think that the private sector is willing to listen to us, and I think that now is, we should do it now.
And I wonder if, I, I wonder what that looks like, because as you said, Dr. Ferreira, the chamber, I remember the chamber had a childcare subcommittee when I was at Crystal State, and I would go once a year. So I wonder if it's also board members taking an active role and going out on the stump to places where we have those relationships? And, yes, going places that may not already have as progressive an agenda as we do, but, and looking for their money, but also if we could convince them to add our priorities to their platform.
Absolutely.
So asking that, not only are we going to put it on your plate, but that we think internally about those committees, about those memberships that we may have to renew, and, and get ourselves on an agenda to present.
I really want to thank you all for your, your hard work and dedication, and I, I really appreciated all the data and research that you provided. And so in, and I'm a, and maybe, maybe, because it just, it, it makes it so clear for people that are maybe newer to the information or that aren't as familiar. I think most of us in this room are very familiar, but like to have those numbers. And so in that vein, although I know that we're in a different time now, I was thinking about all of the universities in the area, right? And my higher ed brain goes to that of UCLA and the other one down the way. No, but in, but in all seriousness, they have various, they have very specific, I'm trying to remember the names, they have very specific departments and organizations that they have formed around DEI work. And as you said, Supervisor, there are, they really do a lot of work on, on parents, and they do a lot of work on young, on adolescents. And one of the concerns that a lot of my colleagues and I have always had is that Los Angeles is, doesn't have a really good space to study, or a lot of faculty in the area that really study young children. And so this is a really good place for, for the, for this report to go into kind of a, maybe a grand tour of all of the universities in Southern California, or Southern, well, starting with L.A. and then moving outwards, to kind of say, this, these, here's the data, here's the research, how can you help us? I know that this is a controversial time, and a lot of folks in higher ed world are very worried about funding, but while it's available, and while there's really kind of specific implications of how this is going to affect families right in the right now, I think this is a really, really good place for it, private, public, et cetera. Thank you. Thank you so much.
To, to, add to your point, I'm a, in, in Long Beach, we're working a lot more with Cal State Long Beach and UC Irvine for that exact reason. And there's a lot of faculty who have been very interested in coming in, engaging, and sharing, and being a part of the discussions. And I believe the team that's growing at UCI, UC Irvine, also has a team that they are collaborating with at, at UCLA. So we can definitely continue to explore that.
Also, I agree. So thank you for your presentation, and I think also the data you are collecting would be very useful for colleges and universities, and to create new partnerships in that area, because they can advance our research and take a proportion of it and really give us more details, so we can really address that intersectionality that's so important. So I think those are, also that we go to them, not just that they come to us. So I think many of us are willing to go out, because it would be wonderful collaboration. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez has her hand raised.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Commissioner, yes.
Thank you. What I wanted to offer is if we, if there is a need for information around the early education workforce and credentials for that, we at LACO have been doing a lot of work there, and we're happy to share the information that we have, the collaborations and the partnerships also with higher education.
Commissioner, would you be willing to make a presentation or tell me who, if not you, then who you think most appropriate, to the LACO board? So they're aware of this work and our plan and the direction that we're going to.
Just for clarification, this particular presentation to the LACO board or the one that I just talked about?
No, the, the, going back to my earlier comment about, about us as commissioners kind of taking our plan on the road and talking about First Five L.A. of today.
Yes, we would be able to do that, of course, you know, if the board approved, I would be happy to make that happen, along with, of course, the First Five team.
That'd be great.
Commissioner Berg?
So I was also thinking with regard to the second initiative, it might be good to have a representative from the Department of Parks and RecCom to talk about the data they're collecting around green space, that, how they're prioritizing different spaces to expand so that we can collaborate and maybe come together around some of those priorities. We're working with a project, we're working with Parks and Rec on a project presently, and they have a lot of data around lack of green space, where they've been putting money in over the past several years, their plans coming up, and I do think that that information would be helpful here as well. And then the other thing would be that I know First Five, we have people from First Five that attend the Mental Health Service Act Community Planning Process meetings. That would be information that could be shared out with your network, so that we have more voices coming together to lift up a Berth the Five agenda.
I agree.
Any final thoughts before we move to the second part, the last part of the session?
May I?
Did you, did you, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll add one more name to our list of names, Chanel Smith, who is our new, Jacqueline, help me remember.
Homelessness Coordinator, I think in the.
With specific focus on families.
Intimate Partner of Violence, I think she's focusing.
No, she just made a presentation to our Commission on Homelessness from the Department of Development, I don't have that right, Economic Development Perspective.
Yeah.
L-A-E-D-C?
L-A-D-Y?
You, you didn't know the acronym.
Yes. Okay.
I think it was L-A-E.
Okay. Yeah, L-A-E-D-C, L-A-E-D-C, yes.
Heavily suggests them being part of the conversation as well.
All right.
If I can just offer, I love this question of how do we take this on the road, so really, really appreciate that. And for board members, you gave a strategic direction in the 2429 strategic plan, very clear guardrails about what we should consider in these tactics and initiatives. With this directional endorsement, what we're hearing really clearly in regards to next steps, one, the connection to the county. We'll make sure, there's a few initiatives work happening at the county and L.A. City as well. We're also hearing the flexibility, given the election time, and reporting that back to you all really clearly. This bridge with unlikely partners is something that we'll be reaching out to determine how to do some of that work together. But the thing I really appreciate the most is leveraging the expertise and connections here with the board. So we'll work with our board relations team to make sure that we develop a 2025 strategy to how to do that a little bit more, and just really appreciate that offer and the leading of that effort, and we'll take you up on it.
Did you get from us what you needed? One more, hang on. Yes.
Thank you. Well, we just had our NEXUS conference. We had 500 people from probably 15, 20 different county, city agencies, plus the community, the community child abuse councils. I, first of all, want to thank our executive director for her opening comments, our chairperson for her wonderful video message, and congratulate Dr. Barbara Farrar for winning the champion award of the year. Yes. And I also missed this meeting last month because it was on the same day. So out of that, I, I just want to emphasize how important it is to bring all of these different agencies and organizations and disciplines together. I, what we do is focus on the specifics of particular disciplines. We had our keynote, Barbara knew her, Dr. Sharon Cooper from North Carolina is a forensic pediatrician and internationally recognized for her research on the impact of the environment on the fetus. And she has amazing findings that help guide the kind of programs that can make a difference. And she has a particular focus also on the African-American community, and she has studied with the African-American community. She is African-American, and she's captivating. And if we could bring her here, I would love to have her present to this group. I also want to say that when you, day by day, are looking at the worst possible outcomes for children, zero to five, you are compelled for children, zero to five, you are compelled to rack your brain for how this could have been prevented. And I will say that each of the participants in the system that responds to these tragedies almost always comes up with the need for the community's support, for the positive intervention, concern about not responding, the concern that if we, if we worry too much, well, are we protecting parents or are we protecting children? These kind of discussions are going hot and heavy right now. And there is a very, very true effort to try to impact the early stages, the earliest stages possible of risk for children. So the one entity that we clearly leave out in our, in our discussions about interactions is law enforcement. Law enforcement can be and has been highly criticized for overreacting, but when you are responding to families with domestic violence or, or child abuse, they are incredibly, incredibly passionately interested in knowing how this could have been prevented. It's hard to see, it's hard to hear, and they don't always do it correctly. Sometimes they do make a difference, but they're coming in at a time where they can see so many things that maybe could have made a difference. So I, I think that if we can try to include them, we have our sheriff, a very open-minded sheriff, we have a new LAPD chief who was the sheriff, and both of them chairing ICAN, and a new district attorney. We need to really connect with them as we look at the, the different ways in which we can make a difference in a non-punitive way. The reality is too, we have a network of over 130 hospitals. We don't just have the county hospitals. And we talk about private hospitals, they aren't connected with each other well at all. We try to do that, but in terms of what they can do when they see a need for services, when they see high risk, I, I can tell you that it's, it's very uneven. And in some places, I'm, I'm so thrilled, I mean, we've been able to bring the county hospitals together on infant safe sleep. And that we can attribute to our board basically saying every newborn should have a crib before they go home. I mean, what an amazing thing. And this comes after we, you know, year after year have reviewed these tragic deaths of newborns because they were suffocated in the bed, you know, or in a cluttered crib. So I, I'm really trying hard to contain myself because this is, we just reviewed a case of a three-month-old little boy who was horribly abused and killed by a mother who had a 17-month-old and was pregnant. And she basically confessed to just losing it. And in my mind, I'm thinking, where's the home visitor? Where was the intervention? Where was the support? Where were the neighbors? I mean, you, you do this for decades and pretty soon you, you are very clear that we aren't going to make a difference just by responding after the fact. So I, I just want to say yay that we're looking at the community. I also want to say that when we talk about the effort to keep families out of the child welfare system, it's really, we're struggling to help keep kids from getting hurt and families, helping families thrive. In my opinion, I wish the child welfare system wasn't a negative. I wish it could be a positive, a resource, but it is not perceived in that way. And that's what we're, we're living with. So anyway, also, my bank account got hacked, so I will tell everybody, if you get a bill from the Geek Squad or anybody else you don't recognize, don't call the number to cancel the charge. And, and really don't type in the code they give you to, to cancel your charge because your life will be turned inside out in a way you will never...
I got three of those texts just today. Thank you.
Right. That's my public service announcement.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you. And congratulations on your successful convening. Did you get from us what you were looking for?
Absolutely. And I'll transition back to Chrissy for the latter part of the day's, so, yes. Thank you.
We got exactly what we were looking for and I'm sure the staff will take this in and they'll start to build the agenda for 2025 as far as board presentations are concerned. So this was fantastic. And I know we can go deep in each of your comments and so we're just touching the surface, but excited for the opportunity to go deeper at future meetings. So we're going to move into a very exciting part of this presentation, which is, which is to go deeper into a few tactics. You see the 10 tactics here. Some of your recommendations on topics and presenters coincide with these tactics exactly. So you all are, you know, no surprise, very much in alignment. Today, we're going to have the opportunity to go deeper on three specific tactics and I'm excited to introduce Jenny Kern, who will speak about communications as a tactic already underway, Selena Rivas, who's going to discuss the engagement tactic, and Alicia Lada, who will discuss the advocacy tactic. Now let them introduce themselves more deeply. With that, I'll hand it over to Jenny.
Thank you so much, Chrissy. Is it not? Oh, awesome. Great. It's wonderful to be back together with you today. My name is Jenny Kern. I'm a Managing Senior Vice President at Spitfire Strategies and we are a strategic communication firm, all focused on leveraging the power of communications to create social change in the world. I've had the great pleasure of, this is the second year collaborating with you. I was here when we introduced the 2429 Strategic Plan last year and have, over the last year, been really collaborating deeply with your communications department, particularly with Marlene Fitzsimmons, Anastasia Howard, and Katie Kuritz, and working really deeply with colleagues across the organization to really bring the strategic plan to the daily work. So in the first year, that was really drafting the narrative for the 2429 Strategic Plan and then was moving it to action. So that included, I will go here, we created a language guide to go with it. And so this was really, in many ways, responding to what we heard so much from you about the importance of language and communications in achieving what we want, what we want, the bold goals of the strategic plan. So this was really about embracing a consistent tone, consistent and aligned framing and messaging across all of the teams. So that's first five LA speaks with that same strong voice. And this means really taking into account so much of what I've heard already, it's guarding against language that unfortunately is all too much around us in our atmosphere, that really ascribes blame and perpetuates harmful narratives, and instead really embracing language that really lifts up and honors the wisdom of communities and recognizing that the assets communities hold are the key to the bold goals. And so really an intentionality in that with trainings across staff and really using that consistent messaging throughout. And then in the vision-to-action narrative that is before you today, it introduces these four initiatives that really continue to guide the action. And here again, hearing from all of you, this has been very intentional about brevity to the document, clear language that's deliberate to invite partnership and communicate with transparency. From your clear direction, there's a really, a large intentionality to communicate about equity, really with attention to regional economic and racial justice at the core of the language. There's also an attention to using asset-based language that recognizes, again, the strengths of communities, invites others into partner, into the work, and keeps that ultimate focus on young children and their families. And I just, as a, you know, we're a communication strategy firm, we work on many issues across the country, so I just really want to underline and echo the wisdom of the remarks today about bridge building and coalition building at this moment, and that a lot still can be done at the local level, but we do have to, to reach out in different ways and, and really pay attention in different ways to what are the opportunities at this moment. So recognizing the importance of communication in your work ahead, Carla asked me to share a little bit about the work Spitfire does around building narrative power. And this is really recognizing that to achieve the goals that you want to achieve outlined here today, it really is about changing hearts and minds. And it's really looking at how do we help others examine these deeply held worldviews that dictate how folks make decisions so that we can invite others in and make sure that those decisions reflect our values. So that, some things about that is really how do we, how do we share frames that share abundance rather than scarcity, particularly in this environment when there's so much at stake? How do we, how do we see the world and frame the opportunity that exists? How do we invite others into the work? How do we build those bridges and coalitions at a time where we have to reckon with how we got to where we are and also dream about where we can go together rather than accepting the status quo? So Spitfire has been doing this work with organizations across the country. We've recently worked with the Children's Defense Fund, which is a national organization, on a narrative guide that is really in partnership with advocates to advance new narratives about safety, joy, and care for children and youth that very much aligns with your work. We work across a wide range of issues, so we're, we're thinking about this in everything from what's happening kind of in the technology space. And we're also, we're doing work, looking at things like diversity, equity, inclusion in higher ed that I think one commissioner mentioned earlier, which is really under attack right now. And we've been doing deep work, doing surveys and polling and really look at how, there's been very coordinated meaning-making and attacks on these efforts and really looking at how can we recognize that a lot of people are aligned with our values but are responding to words that have been deeply politicized? And how can we shift how we talk so that we are building bridges and tapping into that commonality and really moving away from the jargon, which has never helped us, and using more plain descriptive language that invites others in and to really see across, across lines, the value in this work and how we can come together? So those are just some examples of how, how communication can not only look at the moment, like respond in moments, sometimes very difficult moments, but how can we really look at those underlying shared values across and continue to fight for what we know is needed in these moments, even in the face of what can feel very overwhelming? So just thank you all so much for what you're doing and we're excited for the direction of first five LA's work to really look at these deeper narratives that are, that are driving decisions.
Thank you so much, Jenny. We're going to invite Selena to share.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Selena Rivas, a program associate with the Communities team. Today, I'd like to tell you how first five LA is deepening our relationships with the communities we serve to make sure their voices and needs are at the heart of our initiatives. I'll start by sharing our community engagements that help shape the tactics. Without community wisdom, we would not have landed on these 10 tactics. I'll highlight two convenings where we were able to gather parents, residents, and our organizational partners. Prior to these convenings, our objective work groups across the organization connected with various coalitions to gather input to ensure our work aligns with the community needs elevated. One of the milestones in this process was the first five LA Partner and Community Input Session held on June 21st. This session was particularly valuable as it allowed us to connect directly with both community members and our organizational partners. A highlight for me was when the Antelope Valley Shuttle arrived in the morning, commuting over four hours, some with 6:00 AM pickup calls, filled with energy and excitement. Best our community members were just ready to participate for the day. Then, on August 29th, we hosted a strategic plan implementation community feedback session, which was a significant opportunity to share what we heard from partners and how we're incorporating their voice into our implementation. We engaged with 320 stakeholders and community attendees, a number that demonstrates the growing interest and commitment to our work. Our staff has cultivated long-term, deep, and authentic relationships with our partners who have a shared commitment to best serve children and families across LA County. This was a values-driven process. As we look back on these engagements, I want to reflect on the core values that have driven it. Collaboration. Everyone has been part of this process, from administrative staff to senior leadership. This speaks to our collective commitment to engaging with community. Equity. From the outset, our objective work groups were constantly asking, who are we missing at the table? And worked to build relationships with network partners to fill those gaps. Lastly, learning. We intentionally created spaces where we could truly understand the needs and priorities of the communities we serve. This learning process is essential to informing our decisions and shaping the direction of our work. One of our next steps will be to reconnect with our partners to gather their thoughts on the equity index. We want to make sure we're getting meaningful input to guide our approach on equity moving forward. This is not a one-time process. Part of our approach to equity requires us to engage with community on possible direction and check that the direction is being followed. We'll continue to collaborate, center equity in our work, and remain open to learning from community. We can build a stronger, more inclusive future for all children across LA County. Thank you for your time. I'll pass it to Alicia Lada from Community Partners.
And Alicia, maybe one thing before, for commissioners, if we look at page six, you see the tactics and what we're trying to do is give you very specific examples of some of the tactics for the last year. But I know we're moving forward on slides, so just thought it might be helpful for you to reference that page.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Alicia Lada. I serve as president and CEO of Community Partners. We're located here in Los Angeles. We are an intermediary and fiscal sponsor organization. We support organizations through fiscal sponsorship and capacity building. We also work with funders, both public and private, on a range of strategies that help further their mission through things like re-granting, technical assistance, capacity building, evaluation. We've had the privilege of serving as a partner to first five LA for a number of years. And I'm here today to share some information about one particular partnership with you, which is the Community Opportunities Flexible Fund. The fund is a first five LA investment in, to provide policy and advocacy support for organizations that often do not or cannot access these types of resources, yet they are deeply rooted in their communities. Funding may be used to elevate the voices of those with lived experience, to advocate for changes to systems that impact young children and their families. The fund provides grants up to $40,000 to organizations with budgets less than $6 million. Community partners will re-grant $800,000 in two rounds of funding beginning next month and then again in February of 2025. We co-designed with the first five LA team a short and simple, a simple application to minimize the burden on applicants. Proposals are evaluated and organizations are vetted by a diverse staff at Community Partners, and then we take recommendations to first five LA for final approval. Strong applications demonstrate that proposed activities are deeply rooted in LA County, are locally driven, and include community voices and leadership of those applicant organizations, which is a theme that we've been hearing, and that within first five LA's strategic goals, that organizations are strongly connected to a policy approach designed to change systems, larger systems that impact young children and their families. And of course, that proposed activities are reasonable and achievable. To the question, why should first five LA support community groups to engage in advocacy and policy work? We see this as a triple bottom line to benefit first five LA. One, neighborhood organizations have deep connections and are most often able to advocate authentically for policies that impact children zero to five. authentically for policies that impact children zero to five. It's a bottom-up approach that we know works. The second is that this fund is not only building the strength of individual organizations, but they are also convened by First 5 LA and community partners to learn from each other and to build needed coalition. This creates a stronger ecosystem to support First 5 LA's goals, but in a mutually beneficial way. Finally, grantees become partners with First 5 LA to do joint advocacy, policy, and other related activities, so creates even more leverage. I have a couple of examples of organizations that have received support through the Community Opportunities Flexible Fund. The first story I'll share is deals with the Birth Workers of Color Collective. The collective is focused on training, education, and advocacy-based support for doulas here in LA County. Doulas are trained and equipped to support healthy pregnancies and to advocate for increased access to high-quality health care and a reduction in health equities among people of color who otherwise are at high risk of losing their pregnancies. The collective also works with the Department of Health Services to improve the Medi-Cal doula benefit that results in reduced costs and fewer barriers to healthy pregnancies. The second example is the Refugee Children's Center. The center's mission is to provide support for recently immigrated children and their families. The families they engage with have experienced land displacement and other traumatic experiences that have caused them to become refugees. In this case, the fund is supporting work with these families to build community, affirm their cultural identity, and to grow traditional food through a community garden, which is adjacent to the center's preschool in the North Hills neighborhood of San Fernando Valley. By advocating to expand the concept of neighborhood gardens in underserved communities, children and their families can use the garden, these types of gardens, to create stronger family bonds, to learn about their native cultural practices, and in language and in ways that make sense for them. These are just a couple of the examples of organizations that have benefited from from your support. So just want to end by saying thank you for the commission's leadership and to the amazing staff at First 5 LA around this partnership.
Thank you so much. To all of the presenters, I hope that you can hear in the presentations how there's been a dual track, a concurrent track of both deep and thoughtful planning, at the same time, robust and aligned implementation of the strategic plan this year. So looking ahead, as far as next steps are concerned, you can expect presentations in May and June on the budget that will support further implementation of the strategic plan. There'll also be continued discussion on initiatives, many of which you've brainstormed and helped the staff to consider during this meeting. And lastly, as Carla lifted up earlier, there'll be continued engagement with you all in areas where there's alignment, where you have expertise, where you have relationships. And I want to use a phrase that Jenny shared about lifting up and honoring. Although you hear us speaking here before you, there are dozens and hundreds of community members, families, staff that have just poured their heart and a lot of hard work into this. And so I just want to recognize that although we're speaking, there's many more people behind us. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Wave at my homegirl over there. Commissioners have comments? Commissioner McBride?
Thank you for this presentation, for all of your hard work. I was I didn't speak earlier. Maybe I got your loud silence because I couldn't even get my thoughts together. But to answer the question earlier, I agree with all of my colleagues' requests and suggestions. One thing I thought about was maybe if there's way if there are ways we can hear from cities and counties that have done this work successfully. We know right here in California, Stockton had incredible success with guarantee basic income. I've read how Houston has reduced their homeless crisis significantly by more than 50%. Seattle has had really great success with early childhood education initiatives that do include culturally-affirming care. So if there are ways that we can hear from other counties, other places across the nation that have had success with the work that we're that we're trying to do, we don't have to reinvent the wheel if there are ways that it's already being done, even though I know that LA County is often the blueprint. We are the ones doing the work and setting the example. There's a lot that we can learn from others who have had success, have the data to back it up, and also can tell us who we are not thinking of also needs to be in the room. So just thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Fantastic. So Madam CEO and I just put our heads together. We are scheduled for a break. But if commission members are up to it, we can power through the rest of our agenda and not take a break, but it will be the pleasure of the commissioners. Power through?
Power through.
Thumbs up? Okay, power through we will. Let's move on. Do I need to this is informational. Do I need to take public comment on this agenda item?
Yes.
I do. Let's take public comment on agenda item number six.
Confirming there are no public comments on this agenda item.
Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, approval of the 2025 Policy Agenda. And we'll have staff make the presentation. And this will be an action item, colleagues, so we will be taking a roll call at the end of the presentation.
Did you show your plaque when you came to the meeting?
I did. Well, no, I didn't show it here, but I showed it in my office. They were all impressed. It was so it was so it was so kind of you.
Well, no.
There's so many deserving people.
Well, you were the first choice.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So good to see all of you. I'm Aurea Monter Rodriguez, Vice President of Community Engagement and Policy. I'm grateful for the opportunity to lead First 5 LA's work in community engagement, partnership development, data and policy advocacy and advocacy to support the implementation of the 2024-2029 Strategic Plan. I'm also pleased to join Ofelia Medina, Senior Policy Strategist, who has been really gracious and incredibly helpful on my with my onboarding. So today, the two of us are here because we're recommending approval of First 5 LA's 2025-2029 Policy Agenda. As the team shared last month in the October Policy and Planning Committee, we are shifting away from the annual policy agenda to a multi-year policy agenda aligned with the goals we set out to accomplish in our strategic plan. I also want to reiterate that while we're moving away from the annual policy agenda, we will still have additional touchpoints with you, our board, on advocacy priorities throughout 2025 and beyond. But today is a key starting point for the coming year and all the policy and advocacy work that we will be continuing and building on.
Before you move on, explain to me when you said you're moving away from an annual policy agenda. Tell me what that means.
Well, we have the multi-year policy agenda, and we thought that it was really important to continue the work that we are leading and doing at the federal, state, and local level, so that we need some flexibility that goes beyond a year term. But we will be engaging you regularly about the work that we are doing. We heard loud and clear from you that the Legislative Day was really important for the commission, and so that's an example of work that we will continue to work with you on. So the approval of the policy agenda is timely as we just witnessed an election with seismic implications for our work at all levels of government. The policy agenda, therefore, is going to serve as a roadmap as 2025 will be a year filled with opportunities and challenges at the local, state, and especially the federal levels of government. Regardless of the shifts in the political landscape, First 5 LA has and will continue to advocate for increased systems improvements and fundings for federal early childhood supports that are aligned with our policy agenda. The child tax credit is an example of that, but we also see opportunities with SNAP and with childcare. The planning and conversations that we are having are on what we can expect next year, and we want to take into account that what happens at the federal level will have an impact on LA County's families and children prenatal to five. It's part of our work to look at what the feds will be proposing. Therefore, the team is assessing the policy platform to see what implications it will have on our youngest children and their families. Part of my job is also to connect with our partners to better understand what they're experiencing. For instance, some of our partners have already shared that immigration will be an issue. And so and and then we have partners in California that knew that this was a scenario, and we have begun and will continue to connect with them in the coming days and weeks. We will continue working closely with the LA County Congressional Delegation. We will also continue to work in partnership with First 5 with the First 5 Network, early childhood advocates, and national partners to protect and strengthen early childhood systems that support LA County's half a million young children. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ofelia, who will walk us through a high-level overview and the priorities included in the agenda.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners. While we figure out the clicker, really quick run-through, first pleasure to be here with you this afternoon again, a really quick run-through of what the next couple of minutes will look like. We're going perfect. We're going to we're going to review the purpose of our First 5 LA's policy agenda, including really how it guides our policy work and advocacy priorities throughout the year. And then we will specifically discuss how this five-year policy agenda aligns to our First 5 LA's strategic plan for 2024-2029. And before we do that, we're also going to walk a little bit of how explicitly how it aligns before really diving into cementing what the policy goals and priorities of the agenda will look like. As a quick reminder, First 5 LA's policy agenda will continue to be the document that really informs and authorizes the policy and advocacy work for their organization. This is critical as the policy agenda really clarifies the federal, state, and policy and local policy priorities that we can engage in. Again, critical in based on last week's election results. Internally, we also use the policy agenda to serve us as a guide to determine where First 5 LA will lead, support, or will not engage in specific policy priorities. Having an approved policy agenda will then make First 5 LA really well-prepared to engage in state legislature coming in 2025, which in the last week's election, we saw a wave of new state policymakers in Sacramento, including 24 new Assembly members and 12 senators. LA County alone will have 11 new state policymakers for First 5 LA to build as champion for young children. As mentioned, we are shifting back to a multi-year policy agenda to reflect the long-term objectives, tactics that frame our strategic goals, all of which you heard during the earlier conversation. In alignment to the 2024-2029 Strategic Plan, the 2025-2029 Policy Agenda advances our goals that children prenatal to five and their families have their basic needs met, have nurturing relationships and environments, and have a solid foundation for well-being, lifelong learning, and success. The goals in our strategic plan mirror the policy goals of the policy agenda, and the objectives under each goal of the strategic plan are used to inform the policy priorities under each goal of the policy agenda. We do want to point out again that while First 5 LA is moving forward with a multi-year policy agenda, we will continue to develop annual policy annual advocacy agenda that will include specific targeted budget legislative administrative priorities for the year, and we expect them to come back to the board so that there's alignment to the strategic plan and also as an invitation to join us in future advocacy opportunities. In the first goal of securing basic needs, the 2025-2029 policy priorities are supporting policies to address the to address the access, sustainability, and accountability of prenatal care systems, to reduce maternal and infant mortality, and ensure healthy, enjoyable births; strengthening safety net programs and policies that provide long-term support to reduce poverty and promote economic stability; and promoting comprehensive housing policies and systems to ensure access to stable homes. Our second goal is focused on children prenatal to five having nurturing relationships and environments, and the five-year policy priorities include policy efforts to increase mental health screening, treatment, and accountability, to address challenges faced by birthing and postpartum people; promoting policies and practices that increase access to healthy food options and food insecurity; and elevating policies aimed at enhancing and funding access to safe parks and open spaces. And finally, the last set of policy priorities of a policy agenda seeks to advance the goal that children prenatal to five have a solid foundation for well-being, lifelong learning, and success. The 2025-2029 policy priorities are advancing policies, practices, and public investment to strengthen the mixed delivery system and increase family choice; amplify policies that ensure health systems are robust and coordinated and accountable for delivering early intervention services; and advocating for policies that support culturally-affirming care, service, and and supports that meet the diverse needs of families. With that, that is an overview of our 2025-2029 policy agenda, and we look forward to a discussion and your overall approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from board members? Beautiful. Do you have a general idea of a month or season that we might be considering our Sacramento trip? Since we gave folks a calendar today, we could give them a general idea of when that trip will take place.
We really so yes, but yes, and we are also waiting on what the January budget will look like to see whether or not we should push forward or sooner some of our advocacy efforts, depending on what we see in that draft state budget come the second week of January.
Ms. Medina, are you a betting woman?
I am.
Okay. Add to mine.
No, I mean, no, I'm not. But those Dodgers.
Because I have a dish of nickels on my desk, because I love to slap a nickel down nickel down and bet people. I will bet, Ms. Medina, there's going to be some budget language that we will want to pay attention to. So when do we meet again?
February. It won't be before February. We're thinking that it might be right before May revise, so May is what we're aiming for to have some impact, and hopefully by May revise, seeing a less significant cuts of what we're thinking.
Okay. So yeah, because it was H O T hot. Yes.
Hopefully not June.
Right, right. So before May revise.
April.
Okay, so April, April-ish. So folks would just kind of make that mental note, because we would love to have as many board members go who are interested in going. Thank you for any other questions? All right, I will entertain a let me go to public comment first.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2025 Policy Agenda. It's been moved in second please call roll.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Alma Cortez?
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Abigail Marquez?
Yes.
Summer McBride?
Yes.
Marcella Ramirez?
Yes.
Kara Sagala?
Yes.
Holly Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is informational, which is advancing equity for early childhood in Los Angeles, the First 5 LA Equity Index. Let me turn it over to staff for this presentation. This is informational purposes, colleagues, no vote will be taken. This is informational purposes, colleagues, no vote will be taken. We're hearing from Kimberly Hall, Director of Impact and Accountability, and John Kim, President and CEO of Catalyst California.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Hall, and I am the Director of Impact and Accountability. I'm honored here to be joined here today by two distinguished leaders in the field of equity and community impact. I'm John Kim, President and CEO of Catalyst California, who brings extensive experience in developing data-driven tools that have empowered policymakers across California to address systemic inequities. And I'm also joined by our very own Vice President of Community Engagement and Policy, Aria Montes Rodriguez. Our presentation is going to explore the potential of an early childhood equity index to drive meaningful, data-driven change across Los Angeles County. So I'll start us off by making the case for building, to make the case for the Building Brighter Futures Index. John will then share lessons learned and successful models of equity indices, really demonstrating the transformative role that data can play in guiding equity-driven policies. Aria will then discuss our community-centered approach to creating an index that resonates with stakeholders and drives real impact. Then we'll close by looking ahead to next steps. So as I mentioned, during this part of the presentation, I'm going to talk about the case for the Early Childhood Equity Index. I'm going to do that by walking us through what an equity index is, why it's a crucial tool for First Five LA, and what we envision for the Building Brighter Futures Index. I'll also provide an overview of the framework that we're using to conceptualize the index. So what is an equity index? At its most basic, an equity index is a measurement tool that does three things. It quantifies conditions across communities. It uses that quantitative data to identify where gaps and disparities exist, and it informs the strategic allocation of resources. So you may be familiar with various indices, but sort of at a basic level, these are sort of the three things that they tend to have in common. So in simple terms, it's a tool to help us understand differences and conditions across communities, and then to use that information to inform our decision-making with an eye towards achieving more just outcomes. So now I want to refer you to the visual in the upper right, again, just to make a little bit more concrete what we mean by equity index. And so John will speak to this a little bit more later, but for now, I just wanted to share that data from an equity index is typically visualized in a heat map, and these kind of heat maps allow us to see very clearly where disparities exist and where we can really focus our efforts. The final point that I want to make in speaking very, just some fundamentals on what an equity index is, is that while indices really help to highlight disparities, they don't prescribe solutions. So they can help us to identify where disparities exist, but they don't tell us how to address So why should First Five LA develop an early childhood equity index? First and foremost, you all, our board, has directed us to be more strategic in how we allocate our resources. So we're responding to this directive by developing an index. We believe the index can support us with four things. Number one, prioritizing high-need communities. Second, given the context of declining revenues, it can help us to be really strategic in how we allocate our resources so that we can achieve more with less. It's also a tool for helping us to act on our commitment to addressing the geographic and racial disparities that persist across LA County. In addition, it's a data-driven approach that allows us to advance our strategic goals and objectives. So what is our vision for the Building Brighter Futures Index? In terms of the focus, the index is going to focus on well-being, in particular, the well-being of young children and families in communities across LA County. So there are a number of different indices. Some tend to focus specifically on health, some may focus on economic issues. Our index will focus broadly on well-being, and we wanted to achieve three purposes. Number one, we want to have a comprehensive measure of well-being that looks across multiple indicators. You all know that we have clear objectives in our strategic plan that point to specific conditions related to poverty and health and the built environment, but the index is going to give us a more global measure so we can look more comprehensively at well-being. The index is also going to help us to highlight where are there disparities in different communities across LA County when we are focused on well-being of young children and families. And that information will help to guide our resource allocation, but not just how we allocate our resources, it'll also be a tool to support our advocacy efforts so that we can encourage others to invest in those high-need communities. And then ultimately, our goal is that we really want to advance equity in LA County. That's what we want this index to help us do. We think that it can do that by directing resources towards improving well-being for young children and families by prioritizing those communities that experience the greatest So you may be wondering, how are we going to build this index that achieves the vision that I just articulated? So I'm going to just very briefly walk you through the framework that we're using to conceptualize the index, and that is the phase that we're currently at in this work. And when I say conceptualize the index, I mean, let's figure out, let's be really clear on what it is that we're trying to build. What do we want it to do? How do we want it to work? So our framework is comprised of four components. There's the vision, content, use, and scoring. So we began the process of conceptualizing the index with the vision. The vision speaks to what I just talked about. What's it focused on? What do we want it to do? What are we trying to accomplish? And we really wanted to start there because that provides the foundation for everything else. We're now moving on to really thinking about content, and so this is speaking to what kind of data and information are we going to actually use? When we say well-being, what about well-being? What aspects of well-being are going to be included? What are we going to be measuring? And so we're thinking about this in terms of three different levels. We have domains, which is the highest level, so different categories of well-being. You might think about a health domain, a built environment domain, a mental health domain. So what are the big categories that we want to be able to look at? And then within those categories, what are some of the specific conditions? So for example, within a health domain, we might want to look at a condition like access to quality healthcare. And then we're going to have indicators, and those are the specific measures. Where's the data going to come from? And so an indicator of access to healthcare could be something like insurance coverage. And so we have these very broad categories. Within those categories, we define what are the specific conditions we want to include, and then we select the indicators that are going to give us the data we use to measure those conditions. So that's what we'll be defining in terms of that content component. Then we have the scoring component, and that's where we really think about, what is the scoring approach? What are we doing? Are we ranking communities? Are we calculating averages? Are we weighting certain indicators or conditions that we think are more important? It gets to the more technical side of things, but it also determines how we're comparing communities or looking at communities to identify, you know, high and low need. So it becomes really important, even though it could be seen somewhat more technical or mundane. And then the final component is use, and it's not really final, but the last one that I'll speak to, because we want to be clear about how are we going to use the index? We don't want to just create a tool. We want to know how are we going to use it so that we can build it for that purpose? Who's going to use it? Are we thinking about users within First Five LA, within the broader context, other community partners? And who are the audiences and stakeholders? So we want to think through all of these things before we actually build the index. And so this is, in some, like, this is the framework. This is a tool that's going to help us, or the structure that's going to help us build a tool that's really purpose-driven and methodologically sound. So I am going to stop here, and I'm going to turn it over to our partner, Catalyst California, who not only is collaborating with us closely as we build this index, but also an expert and has a significant experience, and so we're going to hear some of that from John. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Awesome. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to see you all. It's been a while since I've been in the hot seat in front of you all. It's nice to see so many friendly faces. Some of you I've known even before I had facial hair. So it's great to be here. I'll say it's also great to be here in what are some troubling times I know that we're all feeling, and despite what we might be seeing at the national level, it's refreshing to see an institution still continue this commitment, still leaning into this idea of equity, not just because it's the morally right thing to do, but also, and often, it's the most strategic and efficient thing to do as well. And so I'm excited to see First Five LA moving in this direction, but also to see you all join several other institutions in the region and at the state level who have been moving in this direction, because in the end, what we need for these communities is not just one or two valiant institutions moving towards equity, but sort of an equity ecosystem that sort of surrounds and could pay unseen dividends in terms of the connections and alignments that might happen when this all works out well. And so what I was asked to do is kind of talk through a few other instances of successful equity index, index size, indices in action, and some that are very local to you. So let me first start with LAUSD. In 2013, the state of California took a massive leap towards equitable K-12 funding when it established the Local Control Funding Formula. This offered a much more equitable way to distribute resources from the state to school districts. But what it did not address was that sort of last mile of equity, which was what happens to those dollars at the school district when they go from the district to school sites. And so that's why the Equity Alliance for LA's Kids, which was the Community Coalition, Catalyst California, when we were called the Advancement Project California, inner-city struggle, and the Partnership for LA Schools, we developed what was called the Student Equity Need Index, or SENI, and we developed it alongside students, families, leaders inside the district. We didn't sort of build it in a laboratory and then just sort of release and demand adoption. We really wanted to make sure that we broadened out the voices that went into the index and therefore broaden out the stakeholders that would really fight to not only implement it but sustain it over the long haul. The SENI was used, was using comprehensive academic and community-based indicators, and it's important to note that the institution of the schools obviously was predominantly focused on academic outcomes, but it was a journey to have the conversation that these students were not sort of only students or entities inside of school sites and in school seats. They were whole children that had environments and conditions that would impact their performance inside those school seats. And so the idea of both academic and community-based indicators was absolutely critical, because I know you can all read, I'm not going to read all these indicators, but you see, you know, math and language arts and A through G completion, things that were important in terms of the school climate, like chronic absenteeism and suspension, but also community indicators like asthma severity rates and non-fatal gunshot injuries, which really spoke to the conditions of what the students were feeling and experiencing from home to the school site. We actually had great support from public health leaders like Dr. Ferrer to help make the case to LAUSD that these non-academic indicators were absolutely critical to really see the whole child and what their needs might be. I will note, when we first proposed this, there were naysayers about the efficacy of such an index and the ability to, like, fully and functionally integrate this new mechanism into what was already a very complex budgetary machine. But now, after many years, the SENI successfully allocates $700 million annually to the highest need school districts that are found through this index, and when you talk to current school district leaders and their budget deliberations, they talk about the SENI like it's been there for decades, right? The SENI has been critical in terms of the school district really understanding where the needs are, being very transparent, being held accountable, to moving resources in those directions. And for the school sites, it's provided flexible dollars to lower class size, hire full-time nurses, social workers, intervention coordinators, enrichment programs, and much, much more. And this is an unanticipated sort of benefit beyond the annual budgetary decision-making. The SENI has also been very, very helpful for the school district, let's say during the pandemic, to use data to allocate critical programs and resources, like the Grab and Go Centers that were critically helpful and necessary in the first few weeks there of COVID, vaccination sites, and also the ongoing question about teacher shortages and where to focus the hiring. It's been a helpful tool for LAUSD, not only in terms of its budgeting and some of its policy decision-making, but also creating this sort of sense of inside and outside the institution. Again, a lot of students and families were brought into the development of SENI, a lot of stakeholders inside of the institution were brought on board, and that kind of deep engagement is what's critical for the long-term success and sustainability of it. What's been fun to see is since the SENI's been so successful, other people have gotten into the act, and now we have things like the JENNY, the Justice Equity Need Index, and the JESSE, the Justice Equity Supply Index, and now we're being called to maybe develop the HENNY, the Housing Equity Need Index. And so on and on it goes. I don't know if we're going to keep the name or go with BENNY for this one, but let's see where it goes. Let me go on and move on to another jurisdiction and talk about the county and its utilization of an equity need index. The first few weeks of the pandemic, our organization, along with many of our community partners, were noticing an emerging racial and economic disparity around the spread of the virus. And remind you, this was like, you know, February, March of that year. By May of 2020, we published the first report showing how pre-existing racial disparities, economic disparities, and overcrowded housing conditions were the driving factors for the spread of COVID in LA County, and we work with many of you all here on that report. This obviously had a huge impact on how we collectively understood the virus and how we needed to respond, and it was really extraordinary to see at that moment the cross-sectoral response, to do everything we could to ensure that the most vulnerable were adequately protected and supported. By the next year, the Board of Supervisors, under leadership of some folks here in the room, were able to adopt a set of equity principles and an equity funding formula on how to spend $1.9 billion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds that came into the county. We were able to develop for and alongside the county's RD team, the Anti-Racism Diversity and Inclusion Team, to establish that index, and at the point of implementation, we were able to use that funding formula and equity index to ensure 75% of that $1.9 billion were dedicated to those found on the index to be at the highest or high need in terms of COVID risk. We looked at indicators that range from unemployment, unemployed workers, 200% FPL, people without health insurance, housing overcrowding, again, some of the same indicators that we might find very useful for the work we're thinking about doing here. It was an extraordinary response and an extraordinary moment, for sure, but much of the infrastructure to implement this commitment to equity was built kind of on the fly, right? If we all remember the hurried-up nature of those days. And we were still very much entrapped by COVID, and so even though it was such a heroic effort throughout the county to bring this to fruition, it was done very quickly, and there's still a lot that we need to learn about how the county can continue to lean into equity in ways that account for pre-existing work that departments may be doing around equity, capacity, and other needs that departments might have, so we can organize more engagement, more buy-in, and to ensure a more whole-of-county approach in the future. Now let me take us to the state and talk about what the state is doing. The state is also getting in the game with what they are calling the Whole Child Equity Tool, Screening Tool, and the idea is that CDSS and the California Department of Education are developing this equity framework and screening tool by first convening a public work group to provide recommendations for the publication of a tool later in 2025. While California's made critical investments in early care and childhood care investments, children in communities facing systemic and historic inequities can children in communities facing systemic and historic inequities continue to struggle to really attain the supports and services they require. And historically, the state has used some data around early childhood funds, but more limited criteria like poverty level, existing infrastructure to run programs, and where the state has already made previous investments. This approach unfortunately misses the mark in terms of the opportunity impact communities that face more intersectional struggles beyond poverty, inequitable access to high-quality services, healthy built environment, community safety, et cetera. And so to address this, the state is now leading in this whole child equity approach that makes a more, takes a more holistic view of supporting young children. And it's sort of leading with this equity lens that puts racial and economic justice at the forefront of early childhood policies and implementation. Let me go back here. The tool that's being developed, again, will help the state to identify communities where there are multiple compounding factors. It'll help, that data will also help leaders inform decisions around resources and policies, and develop a data-driven approach that will also help monitor progress towards addressing these inequities moving forward. Again, the idea is that it'll be completed and released in 2025. It was great to have the current Assembly Leader being the author of that bill. And so we're really hoping for a lot of continued championship and enthusiasm moving forward. So what does this mean for First 5?
John, a question before you move on from that.
Sure.
Because it was offered by the speaker, do we have a sense that it could, it could inform the budget process? Well, the budget, much like we did at the county level, where the point of that work was to dictate how
That's right.
Those ARPA dollars would roll.
That's right.
Do we think this will help create a framework from which the state budget will be developed?
Every path and cadence has been different from what we've seen in terms of an institution adopting equity. Some may need more time, some may need some space to be able to develop in public, and that's what we're seeing at the state. But the eventual goal is the same, for it to overlap and play through critical things like the budget-making process. Okay? Now, when we're talking about First 5 LA, it is not new for you all. First 5 LA has a history of targeted investments for impact. That was what the Best Start Investments were all about. But what we're being, what's being laid out today represents an evolution of this work that's targeting and further leaning into and centralizing equity. In terms of the whole-state child equity tool that is being developed, it is being sort of yet to be attached to any particular funding stream. It is also being developed with a 0 to 13 framework in mind versus a 0 to 5.1. And by getting out the gate before the state one is established, by having it attached to a funding stream, and by sort of showing how it really works, First 5 LA would really position itself in a place of leadership as the implementation of AB 2832 lands in Los Angeles. And so as we proceed, I mean, I just want to step back and note, we've learned a lot through the SENI and the JENNY and the JESSE and all the work that we've been doing. And the research and the data has been functionally very important, but politically absolutely critical, to be able to build that level of clarity, that level of transparency about what folks, what we're doing as institutions. And it, we find that once it's established and sort of embedded in the culture of an institution, people will find new and creative utilities for it, like we saw with LAUSD. And so to be open to what else it could do for us beyond budget decisions is always critical. And the last thing I'll note is what I started with and others have mentioned, which is broadening the stakeholders as much as possible early on in the process. And the development of it pays massive dividends towards the end. You don't want people to be like, where did this come from? And why didn't I have a say in it? So getting that community engagement, that internal and external engagement is absolutely critical early on. That's what I got.
Before we open it up to questions, we want to spend a little bit of time talking about our collaboration with partners. And John, thank you for sharing all the examples of the indices that are in, that have been implemented in different places. And thank you for laying out the opportunities and potential impact of an Equity Index for First 5 Los Angeles. Now, as we consider how to bring the vision to life, we want to ensure that we're collaborating with community partners as an essential component of the work. I'm going to touch on our approach to engaging stakeholders in this process, ensuring that the Building Brighter Futures Index reflects the diverse voices and needs across Los Angeles County. So that is the name that we are looking at. This collaboration will be the foundation of an index that not only measures disparities, but inspires collective action toward equity. For this index to be effective and reflective of our communities, we recognize the need for deep intentional collaboration. Our primary goals for collaborating with partners are threefold. First, we want to gather meaningful input and feedback, raising awareness, and fostering buy-in. We want to, this index to reflect the realities and the needs of the communities it serves. By gathering input from stakeholders, we want to ensure that their insights shape the design and relevance. Through collaboration, we are not just building an index, we're building relationships and trust that will ensure that the index is used to create tangible change. So our collaboration is guided by a few principles that prioritize inclusivity, responsiveness, and flexibility. First, we are committed to centering stakeholder perspectives and needs throughout the process. This means listening carefully, engaging on various topics, and at different stages to ensure that we're capturing diverse viewpoints. Our approach is adaptable. We will review and incorporate feedback systematically, and we're committed to following up with stakeholders to share their insights, how their insights have shaped the index. Finally, we understand that engagement will vary across groups, so we are prepared to adjust the approach to meet the needs of different stakeholders. So on the stakeholder groups, you will see in this slide, that, on this slide, that as we engage in this collaborative process, it's going to be essential for us to involve key groups that represent various perspectives across LA County. You see First 5 LA, community leaders, systems leaders, researchers, and index developers, and index users. Our key stakeholder groups encompass a range of voices from direct service providers to policy influencers, as well as community advocates, and those directly impacted. Each group reflects or offers valuable perspective that will help us understand the diverse needs and priorities across Los Angeles County. By involving a broad range of stakeholders, we're ensuring that the index reflects not only a comprehensive view of equity, but also practical perspectives that inform real collabor, real actionable change. So now we want to open it up for questions and hear from you.
Let me go to Dr. Ferrer first.
Yes.
Who wrote down her question, so she wouldn't forget it.
No, and thank you. It was a great presentation. And, you know, I appreciate the focus on developing an index. I mean, I'm way back at the beginning of the presentation because obviously there are other indices that are around that I find useful. So I'm struggling a little bit about, you know, what the cost would be and what the added value would be. So I'm just going to talk about Healthy Places, which captures, I don't know, I want to say 60 metrics at this point, maybe even more. And, you know, has cost a lot of money to develop and a lot of money to maintain. So, you know, I'm going to talk about like sort of the practical issue because, because, you know, the index is only, these indices are only as good as the information that's collected. And all of that information has to be updated, you know, very consistently for it to stay relevant. So, you know, I just want to say, you know, Healthy Places, they've made that investment. I'm not saying that, you know, maybe, I'm sure, John, you've used it, and I'm sure you have found what, you know, what you think is working, what you, what you think are the issues related to it. It's not specific to capturing information about all of the resources that would probably be captured by a very targeted index that's just looking at, you know, what, what resources are available for children's 0 to 5. But it does look at environmental degradation. It does look at park space. It does look like at, you know, resources for food and to address food security. It does look at race. It does look at geography. It's down to a, you know, I, I think it's a neighborhood level. I don't think you can go to zip code yet, but, but it's pretty granular. And it includes, you know, a whole set of resources that help us do better. So it's not, it's not sort of just focused on the things that we might not have. It also focuses on those things that help people be optimally well. It also includes outcome data. So it also looks at the health status. It looks at measures like infant mortality. It looks at prenatal care. It looks, so it's a very robust, it's a very robust tool. And I know because I was involved in the development, like how many millions of dollars it costs. And that's my worry, is, you know, I think if we do this and we want to do it well, A, we have to determine that there's value added, that we really need, so we need to look at what like Healthy Places is offering and then say, what is it not? Like, what, what aren't we getting here that we really need? And then we have to figure out how much it's going to cost.
Healthy Places, do they do 0 to 5? Because that would be my one question.
They don't, they're not specific to 0 to 5.
But do you think we could extrapolate to 0 to 5?
Well, I mean, they have, they have measures of educational attainment. They have measures. I mean, what I don't think they have, and John, I'm sure you've looked at them more recently than I have, what I don't think they have is like the number of childcare slots. And so I think there might be particularly around childcare, but I could actually even be wrong about that because they keep updating it. I'm just saying, I think it costs a lot of money.
I agree.
And I think for it to be really useful for us, we have to do it right. So I love just a discussion on, you know, why, because it seems like at First 5, we've already made a decision, we really need this. So I'm just assuming you've looked at it and you've costed it out and felt like this was something reasonable that we could afford to do.
Yes. I just want to say a few things in response to your point. One is that when we started this process, we did do what we refer to as a landscape. So we looked out to see what are all of the indices that exist, what are the different features, and what do they focus on, so that we could really understand, number one, is there something that exists that we could use? Or number two, what are some features that we would want to replicate? What are some things that we would want to make sure? Or are there opportunities for us to build on something that exists? Maybe it doesn't suit our needs perfectly. So we did look, and we certainly saw the Healthy Places Index, and it has a lot to offer and a lot that you're speaking to. I think some of the, the gaps that we saw are things that you spoke to. Number one, it doesn't have that 0 to 5 focus. And the other thing is that we're really thinking about including content, so going back to those domains and conditions that align with the goals and objectives of our strategic plan. Having said that, one of the things that we intend to do as a part of our stakeholder outreach, and you'll see we have this group up here, Researchers and Index Developers, is talk to people about what exists and are there opportunities to build on what you're doing? They are already collecting a wealth of data, for example, for the Healthy Places Index that are likely the same indicators we're going to want to include in ours. Are there opportunities for us to build on what they have or create, you know, something that we could use? So we certainly don't want to reinvent the wheel, but we also want to make sure that we are, that we have something that can meet our needs and our, you know, our specific needs. And so that is something that we're still exploring. We know that there isn't any, we weren't not able to identify something that we could use that would address our needs completely. But we are open to different possibilities for how to take advantage of what already exists.
Yeah, that's so helpful. And, you know, I could offer you, you certainly should probably talk to some of our staff, because, you know, during COVID, I mean, you'll see we are always using HPI, but we, we did something called HPI Plus. So we added some things to the index that we felt like were relevant for what we were looking at. And it was pretty easy to do. I can't tell you how they did it. But if you look at, you know, it's like behind the, behind the data thing. But if you look at almost all of our documents, you'll see we always are talking about HP, HPI Plus, because we added, we needed some more information to be included as we were making strategic decisions, but we were able to add that.
Yeah. And I'll just add, and I think I wanted to weigh in, but I'll just add that in the system leader categories, one of the reasons why we wanted to talk to system leaders is to find out what are you doing? Are you using a different index? Or maybe not an index, but you're using various indicators? And so the kind of conversation you just spoke to of us finding out what you're doing and how you're able to augment something that exists is the exact kind of thing that we intend to do during our stakeholder engagement process. So while we're coming to you saying we're developing this index, there's still a lot that we need to figure out about what does it mean to develop? You know, what is that going to look like for us? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, absolutely. Yeah, you know, I think the introduction of the Healthy Places Index was massive when it showed up onto the scene. And I do think that there was a reason for the cost prohibitiveness of it at the time. I also think the ability to create indices is massively changed in terms of the cost efficiency and the ability to do so. With those tools now more available to us, there is almost a better route to go and build what you want and what you need from the get-go than to augment or diminish an existing one. I don't build these indices myself personally at home over the weekends. We have extraordinary teams that do. But what they have taught me is that you can make a thing very noisy very quickly. There, it is a very tenuous balance between the number of indicators you select, how precise you want to get. And, and so I do think building something that's very unique and specific to your needs from the, from scratch is actually probably the best route moving forward. I would also note this, the process of developing the index is almost as, as important as the index itself. It is almost an organizing opportunity. When you have conversations about this indicator or that indicator, you're onboarding different constituencies that then find themselves and see themselves in that index, and then will fight for that index, not only to be implemented, but to be sustained beyond anybody's tenure. And so it is important to not only see the product, but also the process of development as, as an asset here.
That's helpful.
Yes. Thank you again for your, for your presentation and for all of the context around the, the SENI?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just, like, when you, when you mentioned it, I was just thinking about, so in my work with CCRC as a board member, they developed the Childcare Desert Index, which I think is a really important resource tool. And one of the things I think that helped their organization do was move more into the research piece. I mean, they were already using that. And I think my, so I guess my question now is, is that where First 5 is moving next, is to do more kind of research and potential like publications, presentations out in the community that really, that might move, speak to a different group of folks and, and support more of the policy efforts that are, that, that First 5 LA is already doing, and that the rest of the organization is really carrying it through. So I don't know if that's already something you were planning to talk about, but I just wanted to kind of get a little bit more info. Thank you.
Sorry, excuse me, Commissioner. Absolutely. When Selena talked earlier about the community engagement process, both for the strategic planning, plan, and then also during for implementation, we want to make sure that we are going to the different regions, that we're talking to the partners in the Best Start communities, and that they help to inform the indicators, the information. I think that's what was so successful with the Student Equity Needs Index and specific to the LAUSD. If it hadn't been for the voices of students and parents, LAUSD would not have considered including community indicators in the index. And the community really engaged around the weight of the different indicators in the index. And so having touchpoints with the families that First 5 is touching is definitely a part of the process, which is why Kimberly and the Impact and Accountability Team have been so thoughtful in terms of laying out a process been so thoughtful in terms of laying out a process that clearly articulates like the planning so that we can actually share with our community partners and they can have an opportunity to say, this is how we want to see community engaged. And really it's talking about the community engagement and input, making sure that that is consistent with the work that was done during the strategic plan.
Can I have a question? Well, thank you for the community engagement component because I think it's something that we've all spoken to before. Are we looking at, at perspectives like infant mortality and child abuse? Is there some way we can put that in there and again, get some guidance from the community in terms of what we can do with that data after as we look at programs and content and all of that? I think that's an important area to, to include as well.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing this, this to us, the really interesting discussion and set of ideas. And I'm sitting here thinking about the discussion we had earlier in the meeting about unexpected partners and how really important it is right now that we not just go deep into our own fields, but that we think about the multiple partners that we want to engage but bring along. You know, if you take a whole child perspective, it really does, you know, it's cliche, but it really does take everybody. And I, I think both in, both in terms of what you were saying before, John, about engaging different constituencies, having such an index, not a 442 indicator index, right? Spare index. One of these is I think we should consider is how it could help us to engage partners that aren't necessarily already involved in our conversation.
Just expanding on what Commissioner McCroskey was saying, I, I thank you for this presentation. I am excited about this when we went through our process for brainstorming our strengths and any gaps in what we're doing. We talked a lot about opportunities and I see this as a huge opportunity to not only further establish First Five LA as the foremost authority on children zero to five in LA County, but also to use this to expand our voice with the data that, that you're collecting that is very specific to the populations that we serve. And it also can and will become a tool that our partners use and we can use to attract more partners. And it makes me think about something that we've very lightly touched on. I don't know if it was in like subcommittee meetings or in the larger commission meetings, but about convenings and using that as an opportunity to not only attract more partners, but also to address the, the challenges with our declining revenue because people will pay for information and we're not asking the commission or First Five LA to compete with our grantees or the, the community-based organizations that are doing this work. But there are larger organizations that have money that need this data to inform the work that they are doing. And so I think this is a big opportunity for us to lean into and, and design an index that directly benefits the work that we're doing, but can have such an impact on unlikely partners. So thank you.
Question. Mr. Burr.
So I also, I'm kind of a data geek, so I liked the presentation. I liked the idea of getting to the nuts and bolts of things. Similar to what Dr. Ferrer was saying around the Healthy Places Index, over the past several years, we've worked internally in DMH to leverage the Equity Explorer that the CEO developed and add different layers, transform it from census tract to zip code tract, to our service areas, to our supervisory districts, and layering on where we have our clinics associated. So I think for me, I'm not so opposed to developing a new index, but more in favor of leveraging what could already be out there. And then how do we build from those data tables to something that's more designed for the organization? Because I think that's both cost-saving and it aligns with where other agencies, communities, priorities within the state and, and the county lie and are, you know, being driven. I think around, I think about the prevention, promotion, services, governance committee, I don't know, I butchered that probably. I can tell you PPCIT. And a lot of the work that they're doing. So it'd be good to align with other priorities that are already happening. I was in a call yesterday with California Department of Public Health and they're rolling out all of their data around the Behavioral Health Services Act transformation. So I think that there's a lot of work being done. So I think leveraging existing data tables rather than starting from scratch would be a recommendation.
I really appreciate all the comments on this so far, really, really thoughtful and helpful. So this is not a question that you need to answer, but just something to think about. And that is how all of this information is communicated, thinking about the ways in which we can get messages out there and have this wonderful, these wonderful findings incorporated. It seems to me that I heard there was a particular podcast that had a profound influence on the outcome of a recent election. And the impact, the, the impact of that communication in that way said to me, whoa, we're, we're not necessarily connecting in ways that, that get to the families and the communities. So I, I just want to put that thought out there as we look at most everything we've talked about today. How are we sharing this information and how can it be most impactful and helpful? My other question is, I want to know who the photographer is. I love these photos. And these people, yes. Who, who are we looking at and who's capturing these wonderful images?
We have our remarkable communications team. And here's what I'll share. We wanted to make sure to bring families that have young children right now. So our communications team, in particular Anastasia, if you could say hi, and Marlene organized a few photo shoots to update so that we're reminded that the work is around children, young children. Anastasia, do you have the name of the photographer? We looked at three.
Um, we have another photographer.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. We'll get, we'll get that information. But we wanted to make sure that it captured Los Angeles in particular, so all the background, especially in the photos in the back.
I was just about to say, tell me those are new and I haven't missed.
Right.
Okay. Like, I don't think I've seen them before, but I'm not sure. Okay, beautiful.
Yes. And there's, as we walk down the hallway, we'll share some additional pictures that are, yes, yes, in there. And yes, and Chrissy is on the cover of our initiatives as well.
I mean, I just wanted to offer one comment. What I really appreciate about the direction that you're proposing is that you're developing the index that is aligned with the strategic plan. And I haven't heard that in prior developments. I do think that there is really powerful data that can be useful for all of, agree with all the comments that were made. What I'm most excited about though, is the piece that Kimberly, you spoke to, that comes after we have the development of the index, which is the real policy recommendations that will have some meat behind them. The other vision that I would love to just put out that I think that this could do is create what the SENI did. And the SENI is very much utilized throughout the district and they should give you all more credit because they're not really sharing the backstory. I'm joking, but you know, I know that we've used it in our work with, with LAUSD. And it, it is a tool that is recognized now widely across the school district. And it would be really incredible for this tool to be then recognized by policymakers throughout the county, the state. So whenever decisions are being made that impact children and with families zero to five, we're using the consistent index that is available so that our recommendations or policies are consistent. Because often there is a disconnect, right? We're using different sets of data sometimes and that can be skewed pending, you know, the, the outcome. So that would be great if, to apply equity within the, the equity of how we're utilizing data.
Couldn't agree more. Before I call on Commissioner, I'll, I'll just say that you're right, implementation is important and holding firm is important. You know, the local controlled funding formula, I was there, would have gone further until people realized or interpreted it as a zero-sum game. I will lose if these investments go to these other communities. And so with every equity tool, there are people in communities that say, what about me? I've got two blocks of whatever in this area. So I think it's going to be important that we fully support the tool and lean in and stand firm behind you in making sure that it is applied consistently and we don't allow it to be negotiated out from under us or watered down, if you will. Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. And I agree with all of my colleagues. I really appreciate all the, the feedback and different perspectives. Every comment made me want to say something else, but I'm, I'm going to focus on just the pieces that really came to me. One thing that I struggle with, with my local policymakers is when we have either indices or other data sets that are very like under 18, right? That it's really easy to lump in all children into the same kind of bucket. We have been internal to my local team, really having this discussion between like youth and children, and then youth and children and young children. And I think it's really hard sometimes to get policymakers to really see the distinction and why there needs to be a distinction when we don't have something that's explicitly focused on young children, really at that population level. Because there is data that, that's kind of all over the place, but it's not like brought together in a way that we see for zero to 18. And so for my own just personal interest, I think that this is really exciting in terms of further engaging in that conversation around why we're talking so much about our littles. I think that we see that in some spaces. I mean, obviously we're talking about childcare here and there. We're talking about, right, like some of these indicators, but I think to be able to talk about it collectively for policy interests, for policy change, right? I see a lot of value in this. Yes, if used correctly and yes, if shared among partners. But I just want to say, I'm really excited about this. I think that there is a lot of potential, assuming we're doing all the right things as you all plan to do, which I know you will, but I just wanted to thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board? We've come a long way. Remember, board would say, I've got some questions. And they'd all look at me like, don't call on me. That's not us anymore. I love it. Thank you, board members. Any final comments you want to make in, in response to what's been said?
Before Kimberly goes through the next steps, I do want to say that we did here for us to really pay attention as we're engaging the different stakeholders and doing the work on the value add and on leveraging the existing data, building on what is in place in terms of opportunities, you know, really thinking about establishing First Five LA as authority and a voice and really thinking about the policy, the policy recommendations, implementation, the accountability around tracking change based on our objectives and the strategic plan. And robust community engagements are really thinking about convenings and community voice and informing what we are, you know, looking at in terms of the data and the research, really checking in with the community and making sure that they are participating in the work so that there can be another form of accountability with the implementation, especially when difficult discussions happen around, you know, disparities and need, levels of need.
And I'm just going to close this out by briefly talking about our next steps. And if I can get this to advance. Okay. So we just highlight three next steps here, the first of which is stakeholder engagement. We anticipate that stakeholder engagement is going to happen throughout while we're developing the Equity Index, while we're building it, while we're implementing it. So that is something that's core. It's not just for right now, but we are in the process of developing what that plan is going to look like. Who are the different stakeholders? At what phases of the process? What are we asking about? What role are they're playing? So we're really thinking very deeply about stakeholder engagement right now. And through our interaction and our engagement with stakeholders, we're going to be developing the framework that I talked about. So building out what is the content? How are we scoring? What are the uses? So those are all things to come. And we plan to come back to the board in 2025, so in the spring, to share what that draft framework is. What are we looking at, including and, and doing and that sort of thing? So that's where, that's where we're going from here. Really appreciate the, the conversation and all the questions and input.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up for public comment on Agenda Item Eight.
Confirming there are no public comments on Agenda Item Eight.
Thank you, colleagues. This was informational. Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is an action item. And as I move into Agenda Item Ten, I need to declare that I do not have a financial interest, but I am required to identify for the record that I'm a member of the Board of Supervisors of LA County, which is involved in this item. Do you have to make?
I have to recuse. No, I have to recuse myself.
Okay. So Dr. Ferrer will be recusing herself.
Yes.
We'll see you.
When you're done.
In a moment, yes, we'll come get you. So colleagues, this is the item where we're going to ask that you approve the lease agreement with the Department of Public Health for the second floor of the First Five LA building. You'll remember, we were all briefed on this in closed session last month or whenever we convened. The bunt cake has settled in now. Was that a month ago? How long ago was that? Was it a month ago?
A month ago, yes.
Yeah, we were talking about Halloween a month ago. That was pre-November 5th. Okay. Welcome and thank you. Let's hear this good news.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, and the rest of the commissioners. I know I'm the one who's standing before you and the end of the year celebration, so we can make this rather quickly. So commissioners, if you recall from the last board meeting, we explained about the sustainability framework where you see there on the presentation of the screen, which is also included in your board materials. Now, within the sustainability framework, if you look in the red font over there on the left part of it, there is a piece about maximizing First Five LA assets, more specifically operations. And under that leasing a portion of our building was part of this sustainability framework. So connecting the dots with this lease, with our sustainability framework. As a recap from last board meeting, First Five LA again explored leasing opportunities with two potential tenants that are mission-aligned along with First Five LA. In working, deepening in our partnerships, I am pleased and cautiously optimistic that we are, have a promising opportunity with LA County. Last September, First Five LA received a non-binding letter of intent and a draft lease agreement for leasing the First Five LA second floor from the county on behalf of DPH. The distinction between the LOI and the lease, the LOI is essentially has the business terms such as the rent amount and the payment terms for those. Those are primarily the business terms. Those will inform the lease when they get finalized for, for that. So that's the distinction. Happy to share that the business terms within the lease are within the guidelines set by the board. So that's good news for that. And both parties are estimating to complete at least the lease negotiations by mid to late December of this calendar year. And then this will allow for the county to go through their approvals, through their chain of command for a fully executed lease estimated around Q1 of calendar year 2025. So in order to meet these estimated timeframe, staff is requesting that the board approve the attached lease agreement. Now it's in substantial form or a draft in there. It's there for an example. It's not the final lease, but it's just there for an example as we finalize and negotiate the lease. And authorize our And authorize our President and CEO, Carla, to further negotiate, revise, finalize, and execute the lease on behalf of the board with the county and DPH for our second floor. So, as I mentioned, this was presented as information last month. This is now presented as action for the board. So here to answer any questions you may have?
Questions?
Yes.
No questions, just appreciation.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the motion. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, please call the roll.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Alma Cortez?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Abigail Marquez?
Yes.
Summer McBride?
Yes.
Marcella Ramirez?
Yes.
Carol Segala?
Yes.
Holly Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. The motion carries. With that, let me move, we're going to invite Dr. Ferrer back.
I love how we end these years with, on a high note. Last year was the strategic plan, this year it's the lease.
Do you remember a year ago?
I was brand-new. I remember everything because I was so nervous.
Dr. Ferrer, we said no. Just kidding. All right, with that, public comment for items not on the agenda. And I understand we have members who are going to make public comments?
Actually, there's no more public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, beautiful. So, I'll entertain, first of all, we don't, yes, absolutely.
So we're entering the holiday season, right? And as a, one of the, you know, running a child abuse program, one of the things that, there's two things that we do at the holiday season. One is a tradition from my family, which is we have a huge, big toy giveaway for the kids, but we give the toys to the parents. So the parents are empowered to give. And as my dad taught me, that way we give twice. But in, I was listening to you talk about healthy places. We also partnered with private entity and the county in putting into place transitional housing for kids coming out of foster care in East LA. But it takes kids and families from all over the county. And our program is responsible for 49 apartments. So we're in the midst, we found that they put the furniture in, but no sheets, no towels, no kitchenware, no rugs, and nothing that would turn it into a place of humanity. So if you're feeling at a holiday time that you would like to participate, be, you know, email me. And I think it's a moment where we get a chance to put our stamp on doing something back to the community that otherwise, you know, so that's my, it's my podcast. And it's, you know, it's, you know, it's just a moment where it's a remarkable moment where you actually can create a home for someone. And these kids coming out of foster care are directly going into, will be on the streets. And most of them have spent their entire lives there.
So you're going to give your email and a phone number, and people can reach out to you in terms of what they can do.
That is correct.
I have a nonprofit organization that I'm going to have Marina share with you that does that also. So with all of those resources coming together, we should be able to make the holidays beautiful for those 49 children of ours. Are you going to send us your email or something?
I will be happy to give it to Linda, and she can send it to everybody that's here. For those of you who aren't on that email list, my email is ahagermd@gmail.com.
It's Bill Hager.
H-E-G-E-R. And we would love to invite people that want to participate in that or in giving gifts to parents. Because my thing is, we don't give, we don't patronize children by being the affluent that give to kids, but we actually give it to parents.
That's right.
So that we give twice.
I agree, and nothing used, new. That's what I don't play. I don't play used, new.
Yep.
I don't disrespect people by giving them used anyways.
So it's a, it's a really exciting time for all of us and a chance to give back rather than, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn for the year?
I did want to just confirm that Board Relations is happy to collect all that information and share it back out to all of the commissioners. So any information that you would like to send out so that others can donate to your cause, please feel free to forward it to us.
Thank you. So we will transition from the season of holidays to our next meeting will be February 13th, right before Valentine's Day. So thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before that, can we just thank, um, for dessert?
Please, I ate the whole thing. That was my thing. So you get things. Right. Here's my thanks. There it is, A and T plate. Commissioner Ramirez, we're sorry, we're missing you. Have wonderful holidays and end of year.
Thank you.
Board members, there is a photographer here that's going to take our group picture that's going to make us look as good as those pictures on the wall. We've entertained a motion and a second to adjourn through acclamation.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. Thank you. All right, and the photographer wants us to stay here.
Yes, we're going to gather around the horseshoe.